So I now call the order of the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, November 16, 2017. The time is about 7:06. Please call the roll.
President's office.
Here.
Trustee Powell.
Here.
Trustee Jisa.
Here.
Trustee Lumston.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Village Manager Frances.
Here.
Village Attorney Malina.
Here.
Also President Village Clerk Haley. Not with us this evening is Trustee Setteby.
If you'd please join us for the pledge.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see a full, full house tonight here with us. If at any time during the meeting you'd like to make a comment to the board, I just ask that you be recognized by the President and that you make your comments from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. If you are here for a particular agenda item, I think I see a lot of folks who might be looking forward to talking about the conversation about the Veterans Memorial. You're welcome to speak now, or if you prefer, you can wait until we get to that topic and then you can say what you had to say at that time. So whichever you prefer. So at this point, is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. First up is the Village President's report. The only thing I have to report this evening is on December 4th, we will be raising an Illinois flag that starts a year-long celebration of the founding of the state of Illinois, 200-year anniversary. So are we do that about noon? I think it was the plan.
Yes, we'll coordinate with Public Works staff.
Okay. So if you'd like to come join us for the raising of the flag on December 4th, that's when we're going to do it. And also, last week, we did have, this past weekend, we had the celebration for the 80th anniversary for the Riverside Junior Woman's Charity over at the library. We had, it was a great event. There were 13 past Presidents there for the Riverside Junior Woman's Charity. So that was a, it was really nice event. So Allison Scanlon put it all together and it was, it was really wonderful. That's all I have. Manager Frances.
I have a couple of items that I wanted to update the board on. If you recall, last year, right around this time, we actually approved both the facade grant program and also the beekeeping and keeping of hens ordinance. The first item is the facade grant program. We included in our 2017 capital budget. We've received two requests thus far. Both of them have been approved by EDC and myself. The grant money awarded to date is $7,061.50. So obviously, there's monies remaining in the fiscal year 27 budget. There have been businesses that have expressed interest, however, they have not submitted applications to date. For those that were able to attend, we did a ribbon cutting over by Riverside Foods. Riverside TV was also there and filmed it. So if you were unable to make it, you can see it on Riverside TV. That was the remaining report on that one. So successful. It started off a little slow initially, the facade grant program, but I think it's been very well received by the businesses that have applied. And obviously, we've budgeted for 2018. If approved at the next meeting, then we would continue with the program into 2018 and provide the board an update at the end of that year. The next item is beekeeping and keeping of hens. We approved the ordinance in December 2016. Last year, if you recall, it was a pilot program and the village was to issue only 15 licenses to residents for both types of license, whether it was beekeeping or the keeping of hens. To date, we've only received three applications and approved three licenses for the keeping of hens. We have not received anything for beekeeping and it's been a successful program. We have not received any complaints to date. And that is the end of my report.
Any questions about any of that? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. On the agenda tonight are the approval of voucher list of bills for November 16, 2017, and file and review the following. Village Board of Trustees regular meeting minutes, November 2nd, 2017. Community Development Department Monthly Report, October 2017. Finance Department Monthly Report, October 2017. And Fire Department Monthly Report of October's 2017. Also on the consent agenda, a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contracting in the amount of $455,120 with Public Safety Services, Inc., for paramedic services in the Village of Riverside from December 15, 2017 through December 14, 2018. A resolution authorizing submission of a grant application for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, Program Funds for the East Cent Quincy Street Riverside Road Streetscape Project for an amount not to exceed $141,310. And a motion to approve the special event application submitted by the Riverside Chamber of Commerce for the 43rd Annual Holiday Stroll to be held on Friday, December 1, 2017. Are there any items that the trustee needs to be removed for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Peters.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballerine. Please call the roll.
Trustee Powell.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumston.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up are reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening?
I do.
Yes, sir.
This is actually from the Recreation Department because I met with a couple of, a couple of the Big Chill guys the other night. Ron and Wendell asked me if I would do this. So just want everyone to know, for the past 30 years, the outdoors, the outdoor rink that so many of our residents enjoy was not only started, but continually maintained by a dedicated group of volunteers and it's called the Big Chill Crew. This year, as winter approaches, the crew is looking for a few more volunteers. It's a nice chance to get out in the evening if you wish. If you're interested, if you would give Ron a call at the Recreation Department at 708-442-7025, he will put you in touch with the, with the head guy and get you all set up and we appreciate your volunteering.
Thank you, Mr. Ballerine. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. First up this evening is a resolution authorizing execution of a license agreement for temporary use of public property, the operation of a pop-up retail sales location for FLUR LLC doing business as FLUR. Manager Frances.
On October 19, 2017, the village executed a license agreement for temporary use of the train station to Chocolate Twist for a holiday pop-up store. After that approval, some conversation began with FLUR with regard to a pop-up store within the same location, sharing the space between the two businesses. We do have representatives from FLUR here this evening. Staff is recommending that we offer FLUR the same license agreement that was offered to Chocolate Twist for the duration of November 27, 2017 through December 22, 2017. Their hours will be slightly different than Chocolate Twist. They'll be there from 6:00 AM to 9:15. FLUR would like to sell their coffee along with a few select flavors of their gluten-free muffins. If you have any questions, like I said, we have representatives from FLUR here this evening, but I think it's a great opportunity to showcase one of our local businesses and they've worked with Chocolate Twist before, so it's a great opportunity for the village as a whole.
So I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
So moved.
By Mr. Ballerine.
Aye.
By Mr. Lumston. Any questions? This is going to be nice. We're looking forward to this. So please call the roll.
Trustee Powell.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumston.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is a resolution of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for a facility evaluation and space needs analysis in an amount not to exceed $80,000. Manager Frances.
Just to provide the board some background, previously, the board directed staff to complete a request for qualifications. That was done in the spring of 2017 to provide a timeline. On January, on June 23, 2017, the Village of Riverside posted on the village website and mailed to firms a request for qualification for phased architectural services. On June 28, a public notice appeared in the landmark for the RFQ. Responses to the RFQ were due July 21, 2017. The village received an overwhelming response of 23 firms submitted for their, submitted their statement of qualifications. Village staff reviewed all of these proposals and interviewed five firms. Following those interviews, those firms were then rated by village staff. Williams Architects was rated the top firm. They were, they have provided a comprehensive proposal for the costs of the services requested by the village. There are representatives from William Architects here this evening to provide a little bit of background with regard to their firm and then also answer any questions that the village board may have. They've also provided a brief presentation for the village board. And we have Mark Bushhouse here.
Before we have the presentation, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
So moved.
By Ms. Peters.
Second.
By Mr. Jisa. Mr. Bushhouse, please.
Thank you. Okay, I want to give you, I'll say all the important things.
If you could go up to the podium.
And how do we afford the screen when it's time?
I'm the space person.
Oh, you have the, you are the one, huh?
I'm the one.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, sir. Yeah, good idea. Yes, if you want to, alright. Alright, thank you all again. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm Mark Bushhouse. I'm the president of Williams Architects. I want to go through just a few things about us and how we propose to do this really exciting project that you have before you. So if we could advance the slide. Yeah, it's behind you, sorry. Very quickly, we'll talk about our team, the heritage of the folks and our firms involved, some relevant experience that helps us know what, what's what to help you do this project. And then a quick run-through of how we want to do this and then an overview of where the money's going to get this done. Next. Again, we work as a team with the village and their departments and our team and some consultants we have onboard. Our mechanic, electrical, plumbing, structural engineer, and if the village so desires, a historic consultant. Next. That's me on the left, in case you didn't recognize me. My partner on the right, Scott Lang, and then Linda Grubbs. She's a historical architect that we could bring if the village would like us to. Next. Williams Architects, we've been around since 1974. We really have focused on municipal architecture. I've been at the firm 30 years and have spent almost all those years doing municipal projects. That has been really the focus of my life, professional at least, and I've spent the last probably 20 years of that doing planning processes for municipalities. And that's a list you can't possibly read of a whole bunch of municipal projects we've done in the past. Some projects we've done in the area, Barrington, Downers Grove, Woodridge, another Barrington, Downers Grove, Bartlett, Barrington, Morton Grove, Bartlett Police. Next. Carroll Stream, we're doing Village Hall and Police. Carpenter's Ville did their public works and a couple of historical projects. We restored school and in Skokie helped them restore their original Village Hall, Police and Fire Station. Linda Grubbs is a architect specializing in historic preservation. If the village so desired, we could have her assist us with doing a more detailed historic review and report on these facilities if you would like. Next. The process we go through is we, we spend the first part just collecting a lot of data, meeting with your staff, your historic commission, really being sure we understand your goals. We put together a schedule, make sure we figure out the team, review all the drawings and documents that are available for all the facilities that are part of this study, the six facilities that we are, putting together a task and project process. We put together detailed work plans so you can know the steps we'll take, what order they're in, when they're going to happen, so everybody in the team with ourselves and the village really knows how this works. And again, we collect the data and pull together all the information and get going. Next. Then also, we with our team of consultants will come in and review the condition of the buildings, their building system, structural, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, handicap requirements, aspects that have to do with fire and police. There are standards for lockups, handicapped accessibility. So we'll review all of that, prepare reports on the condition of these facilities, what the issues are, and recommended just fixes that if you wanted to just fix your buildings, here are the things you'd have to do and approximately what it would cost to make all that happen. Wait, you went, oh, just back up just one, that's good. And then what we think is a helpful thing is that step-by-step, we would come before you and go over the results. So after we get the existing conditions announced, we'd come back and review with the board and the public. Here's the findings of your buildings. Here are the issues, here are the historic context of these, and really discuss that and get that out there for everybody to know. Thank you. Now the next one. Concurrently, we would start, but we would have a process where we really want to figure out what you need. Because master planning has very three simple basic steps. What do I have? What do I need? And how do I get from what I have to what I need? So this is the second part, to figure out what you need. So we would go through your current staffing, talk with village staff, and get a sense of what changes are predicted for the community over the next 10 to 20 years. Consider that going to affect any staffing levels and functions or services the village may need to provide. Working from that, we then do space programs where we figure all the rooms that are needed and the sizes they should be to handle the numbers of people and the things they do and stuff you store. Work through a process. We end up with a space program that lists the size the buildings should be for now and for the future and get that very defined onto it from pretty exact numbers. Then again, we'd like to come before the board, review that information, discuss what the basis of that is, get your input and review, and reach a consensus on the space needs for all these facilities for the community. Next. Now that we have that, we would kind of fast-forward and do a bunch of studies that would evaluate ways to change the buildings, either add-on, remodel. If we had to replace something, what would that look like? Put budgets with all of that together. Again, we'd come back and review that with the board and the public. Also, we'd meet with your historic commission and in here it says deliverables. We put all this stuff into a notebook so the village has a good record of, of all the work that's been done, the math, the calculations, the meetings. And now you've got a good document that the village can look at to understand how you got to those recommendations and what, what options it has and what dollars would be associated with different, different options that the village could consider. Timing-wise, we think this could take four to six months. Not that the work we do has that many hours in it, but this is really a step-by-step process of gathering information, working on it, really working with the board, staff, and the public. So at the end of this process, we've all had a good chance to review and digest and work through this so that the results and recommendations and ultimately what the board selects, everyone has a good understanding of what that is, why it is, what it is, and, and the reasons that is the best option for the village. So in a nutshell, that's the process we'd go through. Next. And yes, we have to charge for some hours. Again, sorry for the small size, but we broke this fee down to have civil engineers, structural engineer, mechanic, electrical, plumbing engineers, ourselves as architects, to come out, look at the buildings, do some historical review, come and present to the board. That's about $34,000. Space programming, again, we have to meet with each department and function, talk through their needs, prepare these rounds of space programming, and again, come back to the board and present that. That's about 13. We do the planning then of drawing concepts, rough ideas, site plans, budgeting, get those together. That's about $24,000, $25,000. Then we have to wrap that up with some more public meetings, come back, make sure everybody understands what we're talking about, get feedback, refine things, present some good final documents. That's another eight. So that's 79. And then we give a reduction because we really want the project. So there we are. So we're down to about 73. And then we have reimbursable expenses. We got to print all these books and papers and run back and forth, so we'll only charge for what we spend, but we're asking for a maximum of about $7,000. Next slide. And then some optional services if the village so requests, if they want us to draw some elevation studies. Ooh, I get my own. What these buildings could look like if we did some ideas, a price there to do each of that. If the five public and, and board meetings, maybe some more would be needed to get some more dialogue going with the community. We can come out and do those for about $850 each. Also, if you'd like us to go on some tours with staff or others to look at other modern village facilities that have been done in the Chicagoland area, we'd be glad to attend and talk through as we look at them for about $1,100 per tour. We've got a landscape architect that was part of the interview process that can do a couple of things. One, they can review your existing landscaping and sites and for about $6,300, and then have them involved in the design of the project, advising on layout and landscaping and views for their five grand. And then on the ADA side, staff had some questions about what if we would do not just a general overview of ADA issues, but get very detailed, room by room, item by item. If you want us to go through every room and comment on all the doorknobs and get that detailed, we can do that, but that's quite a few hours on our part. We need to charge another $6,400. Then also, Ms. Linda Grubbs I described, she has done a lot of historical work over her career of 30-plus years. If you'd like her to come in and do a more thorough analysis of the historic aspects of these buildings and you'd like someone with more experience doing historical evaluations, we can bring her in and have her do that work, but we'd have to add eight to 14 grand to have her do that with us. And then finally, if you want us to do more things, you have to write it down and ask us, then we'll do it and then we'll charge you per hour. So, but we don't go do things unless you tell us to. So that's that. Any questions I can answer?
So just by way of a more general background, in case folks aren't quite sure what we're talking about here. This, this is, this is really the first step toward addressing, one thing obviously that stands out is the Old Youth Center. We have significant needs for our public safety facilities, both our police and fire. So instead of just trying to do these things kind of ad hoc and then one-off, the board had talked earlier that a better way to do this would be to do a comprehensive analysis of all of our facilities in the village to take a look at, as what Mr. Bushhouse was saying, what do we currently have? What do we need? What do we expect our needs to be in the next 10 to 20 years? And within that context, then devise a plan moving forward for if, whether we want to renovate our facilities, whether we want to consider possibly new facilities, what does the village want to do ultimately with the, the Old Youth Center, both the building and/or the space on which it sits? So this is really the first step. This, this will be the focus for our community in many ways for 2018. This has been out there for a long time. We've been waiting to turn our attention to this for a long time. So this is the first necessary step down that fairly long road. So that's, that's the context for this, for this study. So with that said, are there any questions or comments from Mr. Bushhouse, from either the trustees?
I have a question. So with regard to the meetings with the facility directors, is that you and your partner are going to be handling those?
Yeah, I would be directly involved. I do the planning side, so I would be at probably every one of those meetings.
Can you help describe kind of how the public interface would work? I know you said you had five meetings included in there. How would that, is that an open charrette? Is that, how do you handle that?
I'd like to have conversations with you and your staff to see how they all would work. You saw several board meetings. We'll need to come back and review the steps as we go. We have two other public meetings in there. Many communities have held open houses where folks are invited in. We may talk as elected official staff and us, a few minutes at the beginning to get the information out there. And then just get some feedback and talk through ideas, get their thoughts and comments. And again, sometimes they're more formal presentations, but really, the whole point is to get information out and get a feedback loop going with the public about, about these ideas and possibilities so that we can all learn together what, what was best for this municipality. So those are the kind of ideas we're thinking for those other two.
And I got, this is more for you guys. How are we going to handle the fact that like in this building, I'm assuming this is in it, we have partners in the building? Are they aware of this RFP? Are they participating in the RFP?
They are not participating at this time, so Williams Architects would just evaluate the village spaces, the areas in which our employees are within, in addition to the other facilities. We can always reach out to the township, but that would be a separate and distinct contract, separate from what the village is. But I'm sure that Williams Architects would be more than happy to engage them in that. It's whether or not they have the wherewithal to be part of that.
I think it makes sense to reach out to the township board and talk about that. Otherwise, you're going to have a half-baked program for this building. So what do you have on that? I mean, that's a good point. If you're only doing half the building.
Right. Certainly, including all users of a building at a very obvious level makes sense. District municipalities I've worked with, they have different arrangement with other government agencies. Who leases? Who owns? Is there an expiration of a lease? Is there a possible change happening? Those things can affect those conversations and of course, funding, who's, everybody has to kind of pay their part of it to, to make it work fairly between them. So standing here tonight, I, you know, I can't tell exactly how you should work that out, but certainly if they're going to be a part of the puzzle, it certainly helps to have all the pieces.
I have a question. The historical expert. When in the process do you typically bring someone like that in and when would be kind of the drop dead of making that choice?
You can't do it too soon. You could only do it too late. I, I think if you want to wait a bit and see how some of the answers start coming back about reuse or replace, that could be one option. The aspect of understanding the historic aspects of all these facilities and then what, what guidelines will have impact on their ability for the village to then redevelop or make changes, understanding what those guidelines are for each building will be helpful in us trying to estimate costs and propose ideas. So within the fees we've, on the, that first page of fees, we have us doing a very straightforward historical review with our own staff. And then if you want the expanded, you would have her come in. Frankly, there's not, it's not good to have us both do it because now you're duplicating some efforts. Frankly, if, my honest opinion is if you want the historical review, do that right to beginning when we're doing our review of the buildings and get it all done at once. You have all the information at the beginning.
And one of the reasons why I, I actually had him pull out the historical review that's listed under optional services, because we have such a heavily involved preservation commission and Director Apt is obviously works very closely with them. I felt that that could be an optional service and if we, if need be, we would bring that person in if for some reason preservation wanted that additional consultation.
But to follow up on that point, so what is the difference between the historical analysis that you're going to do, that you pointed out to on page one, and what Ms. Grubbs would do?
Linda Grubbs does a typically much more thorough examination of, of existing documents, histories, and conditions. She will bring forth more detail and history about very smaller parts of the design and architecture and land planning. We will do a more of an overview. We will both, either one of us would still come up with guidelines that would follow the requirements, whether it's a federally registered building or a, you know, more of a locally registered building. We still would put those guidelines out there that would affect the design. She simply does more research and has more knowledge and background in historic architectural preservation than our firm does. So hers is just deeper and thorough, more thorough.
Do you feel like you'd need her?
In a lot of communities, I would say no. In Riverside, I, I'm cautious because you have such a deep heritage here and you're a well-known community for some very important design ideas and the historic aspects of your buildings. So I, I want to be very careful not to, to guide you to say one's the obvious answer. I would, I would leave it up to you folks to really decide how deep you want to go on this. Because you have some important architecture here and that's important to this community.
I think in the past, that kind of flushes itself out after the first couple meetings of how deep you're going to go. If you're starting to deal with the facades on the renovated buildings or not, so I, I think that'll flush itself out as we go. Thank you for providing the additional services piece because it helps us from a fiscal perspective. What, what exact building will you be, will you be looking at?
This building, the police, the fire station that's connected, the building behind it, whatever you, the old public, whatever, community building, I can't remember the name.
New Center.
New Center, yeah. And then the other fire station and the scout camp facility at Deer Park, I believe.
And Watertower.
And Watertower, thank you. Yes.
And Public Works.
Yes, Public Works, there are certain things that were not, so the facility, there were certain things that we took out because it was a relatively newer building, but they'll still be evaluating for certain space needs and analysis. But like, for example, the civil review and structural review, we removed that component. It's, that's not to say we couldn't put it back in, and that's why I put the not to we couldn't put it back in, and that's why I put the, not to exceed the eighty thousand, given the reimbursables and potential adding of optional services.
Because that is definitely an important building to include in terms of space needs, because they got a lot of space.
And it is.
Yes.
Correct.
Why is that the train station part of this?
With regard to...
It's a...
Public facilities?
It's a big building. We own it. We have storage in there.
We do.
Just...
It can always be added, you know, for an additional fee.
I mean, my question is, why not the train station and why the scout cabin? I mean, the scout cabin's...
Yeah, the scout cabin, I don't quite get the scout cabin.
Yeah, the scout cabin, it's a scout cabin. It's a cabin. It's one big room with fireplace. And a couple bathrooms. I'll just send you a bill for a hundred dollars for that.
Yeah, maybe we just switch those out, take the scout cabin out and put the train station in, because the train station at least has potential commercial application, which the scout cabin is not.
Or office in, or I mean, that...
It's a big building.
I agree with that. I think there's a heck of a lot more opportunities at the train station than there are with our scout cabin. I mean, that's one nice conferencing space, basically.
Is it that easy to just switch one in?
I have to look at the difference. I didn't expect to spend much time on the scout cabin. We thought that would be a quick review, probably some handicap accessibility issues, so you could kind of get a handle of what that might mean for you. Train station, I think, is a substantially larger building. I'd kind of like to get paid something extra to do more work. But always flexible, we can work that out.
Over the years, we hear about other local governments and other local civic institutions, organizations, and their space needs. Is there any opportunity in this process to look at opportunities for shared space or shared costs with spaces?
From my perspective, I think we would want to get first through these first two phases, because I know D-96 has been working on their own analysis of it. But if we were to move forward with potential new facility or extensive rehabbing of existing facilities, I think definitely, I've worked closely with the superintendent of D-96, there could be a potential opportunity with the library as well. And I'd like to, my goal as part of our interviews and discussions with Mark was, I don't want a space that's only programmed ten percent of the time. You know, I want to fully utilize all of our public spaces, whether it's residence, meeting space, or office space. So, that is my goal for the community as well.
And then just add to that, like I said, this is, and you, as you know better than anybody, this is the first step of a long, long process. But as we get well into this, we should even, we could even consider the possibility of public-private partnerships with regard to structures as well. So, this, like I say, this is a big one, folks. So, this is going to be a great conversation that we're going to have extensively over the next year.
And I wouldn't necessarily rule out, I mean, currently our consolidated dispatch is, will be in North Riverside, but I wouldn't necessarily rule out it staying there for the entire duration. If the opportunity should come up, it may be more appropriate for it to be relocated Riverside. I don't know. These are all questions and things that'll have to be vetted along the way, but I think it's something that we should be reviewing.
So, just to close the loop on the historical aspect of it, maybe early on in the process, we could bring preservation more fully into this, because to Mr. Bush House's point, if we're going to enlist Ms. Grubb's aid to this, we should probably do it sooner than later. And if we're going to include the train station, then we especially would probably want her involved. So, we should leave that option open. What are the trustees, what do you think about this idea of basically replacing the scout cabin with the train station in terms of the analysis?
I think on the program basis, it makes more sense. I figure out what could be better utilized at the train station, or what options it might be, but...
Could you have something, Mr. Pollard?
Well, I was going to suggest that we ask for a price just to add the train station, not remove the scout cabin, because as Mr. Bush House said, there may be some ADA stuff that needs to be done at the scout cabin, and maybe that space can be utilized a little more, and that seems like a low-cost option anyway. So, let's, I'd like to see what the additional cost would be, just to simply add that in.
And one of the reasons why we initially put scout cabin down was because of its heavy utilization for the different camps that parks are wrapped the host is, hosts throughout the summer, and now they have before and after school, so.
And just to be clear, it's just the facilities, not necessarily the, for instance, the, any parks or greenways or walkways around that, those, or what's included, I guess?
You know, park areas, I would say no. As we would look at this municipal site, certainly you've got a river, and this site has potentials, that we would certainly take the whole site into account and look at what options could happen here, definitely. The other sites are a little less impactful, or at least there seem to be fewer options, or there isn't a river next to most of them. And the scout cabin, we would just look at the building itself, not the park, as it were.
Anything else? Could we have a motion second, or is this called?
Trustee Pollard.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bush House. Welcome to it.
Yes, absolutely.
Next up is an ordinance amending the village code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois relative to ambulance service fees. Director Johns.
Good evening. A little bit shorter. During our initial meeting with the village's new paramedic billing company, Paramedic Services of Illinois, they suggested that the village review our fees as they viewed them as below market average. Later this fall, the village surveyed surrounding communities to evaluate our fees, which is available on your board packet, and did find that our fees overall were lower than most, and recommended an increase in overall ambulance fees. Staff also included the ability to reduce fees if the resident is unable, is able to prove a financial hardship. Were there any questions for myself or Chief Buckley?
Before we get to that, can we get a motion in second to approve the ordinance, please? Motion by Mr. Gisa, second by Mr. Lumsden. Questions or comments for a chief or director? Yes, sir.
I don't know if you know this or not, but when we charge an ambulance service fee, is that typically covered by insurance?
The majority of it typically is. Sometimes there's a small coque, or depending on where they are, they're deductible for the year.
Thank you.
Again, I think that's why the hardship is, having the hardship is included in there, is the opportunity to match the fair market value for the service we're providing, and have the opportunity to waive it if we know that there's a financial situation, correct? I mean, that was the goal, so.
Please call the board.
Trustee Pollard.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next up are considerations, these are just informal discussions where informal action is not taken. The first item is with regard to information on a...
Do you want to switch those around?
This is going to take ten seconds. First is information on a possible referendum on video gaming in Riverside. At our November second meeting, the possibility of the board talking about a referendum with regard to video gaming was discussed. This will be discussed at our December seventh meeting, where we're also going to have our general discussion continued from our November second meeting. So, the plan that we have to facilitate this, if the board was to decide to move forward with a referendum regarding gaming and wanted to get it on the March 2018 ballot, it would have to be submitted in January, early January. So, in order to facilitate that, the board would actually have to make a decision on the specific question itself at the December seventh meeting. So, what we're going to do is we're going to have our attorney have a draft question ready, so that should the board decide that they want to go that route, they will be able to vote on that question at that time. So, basically, what will happen in the December seventh meeting is we will basically complete our general discussion that we had started on November second, and once that discussion is complete, we will then consider whether or not the board wants to place a referendum on the March ballot, and if so, what the specific question would be. So, that is the, that's the process that we're going to move forward with on video gaming. So, that's all that is. Any questions about that from anyone?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Lindsay Morrison at 421 Repton Road. My question about that is if the language has to be drafted and ready, what will that language be asking? Will it be asking if we want, you know, will we, if we want to allow video gaming, or if we do not want to allow? So, which, you know, which would it...
My anticipation would be that the language that is brought to the board would be very straightforward, something just as simple as, should video gaming be allowed in Riverside? Because at that meeting, the board then, if they wished, can change that language. It's just that we have to have it officially on the agenda.
To make a decision that night.
In order, so that it can be a binding vote by the board. So, my anticipation is that we will start out with a very generic question like that, and then the board can make changes if they wish.
All right. Because clarity is obviously really important with referendums.
Absolutely, absolutely.
On that, just, has anyone, have any businesses asked to have the ordinance changed since the last meeting, so that they could have a license for video gambling?
No.
No, okay. And the other thing is, I know there've been some articles, and sometimes the gambling operators are very aggressive in terms of trying to help this, make this happen. I don't know if there've been any contact from the operators or anything like that, reaching out to the trustees or to the village.
No one's contacted me.
Okay, great.
Could you have something else to clarify?
Oh, yeah.
I wanted to point out, although the language of a referendum can be critical, this referendum, if the board decides to put it on, would be advisory only.
Yes.
And so, it's not quite as critical as when it's a binding referendum. Those are the only point I wanted to make.
I think the most important piece is that it's understandable to voters. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. And last but not least, the moment you've all been waiting for, is a discussion of renovations to the veterans' Gold Star Memorial in Guthrie Park. Mr. Bailey, is Mr. Bailey here? Were you going to present this one?
I was.
Are you going to do it together? Did you want...
I was.
You're going to do it? Okay. So, what we're going to have first is, the Landscape Advisory Commission and the Preservation Commission have both looked at this issue and have provided recommendations. So, the first thing we're going to hear tonight is from the Landscape Advisory Commission. This is Chairperson Maloney, and she's going to share with us what the Landscape Advisory Commission discussed.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Maloney. I'm the chair of the Landscape Advisory Commission. Please bear with me, my voice is on its final legs, so I'm going to try to get through this, but I hope these are important points that you'll help me out with. Everyone in the audience, thank you for coming, especially our veterans. First, let us all agree that we share the goal of honoring our veterans. All of us either are veterans, are related to, or know of veterans. All of us cherish and honor their service. Some background. The village trustees identified that the veterans' memorial in Guthrie Park is in need of improvement. The site is difficult to maintain, and due to inadequate footings, at least one of the memorial stones is sinking into the earth. The Riverside Landscape Advisory Commission, the LAC, was asked to develop a recommendation to improve the veterans' memorial and present our thoughts to the village trustees. This is why I'm here this evening. In response to the village trustees' request, the LAC hired the landscape architecture firm, Living Habitats, in spring of this year, to offer design solutions consistent with Olmsted principles and respectful of the memorial's history. Living Habitats developed three alternatives. These are in your packet, but let me summarize. Alternative one involved improving the current Guthrie Park site, in particular, stabilizing the memorial stones and making the site ADA accessible. Under alternative two, the memorial stones would be placed along a pathway, creating a memorial walk. Alternative three relocates the veterans' memorial to a location in front of Riverside Township Hall. Living Habitats approximated the cost of alternatives number one and number three to be about equal in the range of thirty thousand dollars. The second alternative was approximated at fifty-five thousand dollars. The LAC voted at its regular meeting in August to recommend to you that the village enhance and relocate the veterans' memorial from Guthrie Park to the front of Riverside Township Hall. That was alternative number three. The commission made its decision thoughtfully after significant work and deliberation. The goal of the recommendation was twofold, to better honor our veterans and to preserve the principles of Olmsted's historic design for our community. The LAC recognizes the importance of the memorial and the importance of Guthrie Park, Riverside's showcase green space. Since Guthrie Park is arguably the most visible park, the first visitors see from the train station, and an important component of the natural scenery, it makes a crucial statement about Riverside's relationship to the Olmsted design. The key impetus to relocating the memorial to the front of Township Hall came when the LAC realized that the existing structure was not ADA accessible, and that to make it so would expand the memorial's footprint. We were advised by our consultant that unless it is a simple repair, the requirement for ADA accessibility would be invoked. It also seemed to us that a memorial, for veterans especially, should be readily accessible to any and all individuals with disabilities or mobility issues. Hence, moving the memorial to a prominent location in front of the Township Hall, which already is ADA accessible, is the best solution. Let's first examine Olmsted's design guidance about memorials. Remember, he intimately understood the price of warfare. In his role with the sanitary commission during the Civil War, he transported ships of wounded and dying soldiers. Yet, he never wanted memorials of any sort in a park or green space, and he adamantly wrote against their construction. He felt that nature alone has the most curative powers. Over the years, I have researched Olmsted at the Library of Congress and many other sources, and have yet to find him favorable towards a statue or memorial in a park setting. He does support memorials as part of a more formal setting, including near buildings. I won't belabor this a point, but attached to the document for the record, many citations from readily accessible literature. When the veterans' memorial was first conceived around the 1920s, and as a side note, it was originally planned as an integral part of the Township Hall library complex. Olmsted had been dead only about twenty years, well before his body of work was recognized by scholars, and well before Riverside was deemed a landmark. Now, when we know better, how does a man-made memorial in the centerpiece of Olmsted's historic landscape reflect our community's understanding and stewardship of green space? That said, there is absolutely no intent to clear the park simply for Olmstedian purposes. Moving the historic monuments to the front of Township Hall will be a far better memorial for our veterans, and will provide increased visibility and accessibility. As I understand some of the recent goals of this board, Guthrie Park will be used more for picnics and festivals in the future. This increased functionality also prompts rethinking of the memorial space. Some veterans and others here tonight will passionately argue that the existing site is both sacred or historic. is both sacred or historic. Some compare it to Arlington National Cemetery. Respectfully, unlike Guthrie Park, Arlington is a cemetery and does not allow picnics or festivals. Furthermore, Guthrie Park is not called Veterans' Park, and we already have a separate Patriots' Park. We must devise a solution that considers the future park needs for all of our residents. When something is labeled sacred, it's natural to pay attention because it shows a depth of emotion. Calling something sacred, however, should not make us recoil from thinking about other options, options that could address other constituents' concerns, such as those of the disabled. From what I've heard, those who would keep the memorial where it is prefer the natural beauty of its setting. I fully expect the veterans in the audience to say that they feel it is more respectful of the fallen soldiers to leave the site alone. Again, respectfully, the LAC disagrees. We feel that as the use of Guthrie Park is changing, it is important to reevaluate how the memorial fits in its context, and a relocated showcase memorial in front of Township Hall will honor our veterans more. I can understand that the point of view that says Guthrie Park is a serene place for the memorial, but it does not match the day-to-day reality. The memorial in its current location imparts a sense of abandonment, or worse. I ask you, of all the times you pass Guthrie Park, how often have you seen anyone there paying respect to veterans? How many people did you see there last week on Veterans' Day when there was no village-sanctioned In the past several weeks, through random observations, I witnessed these interactions with the memorial. And I apologize in advance for the indelicate images. People have stumbled over the memorial stones, hidden as they are. At a recent festival, right under the memorial flagpole, a man sat in a lawn chair with two empty crushed beer cans at his feet, a cooler nearby. People, including a member of the American Legion, asked, "Where is the memorial, anyway?" A young man walking a dog across Guthrie Park beelined for the memorial. The dog did what dogs do, and the man walked on. I was personally shocked at these encounters, but as I thought it over, I realized that it was not a case where I just unluckily witnessed some anomalous activity. The current memorial is poorly sited and designed, and hence, these are likely typical The current site tries to achieve two incompatible goals: unobtrusiveness while calling attention to itself. Here are some design flaws in the current location. It is a man-made island in the middle of a naturalistic Olmsted design. It does not relate to anything else in the park. Dogs are naturally drawn to the low-lying ground cover, and thoughtless people will use the hardscape as a place for picnics. It is out of scale with the rest of the landscape. The cement pad barely holds three people, let alone more than one wheelchair. The plant palette is very limited at this site. Plants must be chosen for their naturalistic, unmanicured habit here. Shade further limits the possibilities of plant material. The solemnity of the memorial is at odds with the nature of the many festivals that occur in Guthrie Park, and festivals and picnics in the park are only expected to increase in the future. Lighting does not reach the height of the flagpole, leaving the flag in darkness. In winter, the memorial looks particularly abandoned, since evergreens are not preferred in naturalistic designs. As earlier noted, the site is not ADA accessible. All of these problems can be fixed by relocating the memorial and making it a showcase of which we can be proud. Some have suggested that the accessibility problem could be resolved by simply cutting a path to the memorial site. They say that the path is not a big deal. Well, yes, it is a big deal. When, since Riverside's historic landmark designation, has a hardscape path ever been cut through a signature park? Particularly when there is a very good alternative location. What kind of precedent would it set? And a path is only the first of several ADA issues if we want to be true to the spirit of the law. What about benches for those who cannot stand for long periods or who wish to sit quietly in the space? What about space for more than one disabled individual? A path and cut curb for parking only admits one wheelchair-bound individual, whereas, at the ADA accessible Township Hall, there is a variety of access points and areas for people to rest. As to the history of the site, let's remember that no battles were fought here, nor, like Arlington, is anyone buried here. Yes, there is a degree of tradition in the infrequent ceremonies only recently revived here. The memorial has been here for almost 100 years. The Preservation Commission voted to retain the current site for that reason. But wouldn't it be nice if we could revitalize these traditions at a site where more people were able to attend? The history is in the stones themselves, which are beautiful remembrances exquisitely wrought. These can and should be preserved. Now for some good news. Let's consider the proposal to move the historic stones and markers to a showcase spot in front of Township Hall. I have a very rough sketch. As I say, this is very rough. It is not to be construed as anything but a possibility of how this might work. Here are the advantages. Most importantly, the Township site offers greater recognition to veterans, especially as people pass on a daily basis to conduct civic functions such as voting and holding public meetings like this. It will not be abandoned or forgotten in any season. You can readily get up close and read the names of the soldiers. Accessibility for disabled individuals is addressed. The Township Hall site already complies with ADA regulations. Benches can be added. Braille signage could be included, and other tactile elements added for those who are sight impaired. The monumental stone facade of the Township Hall offers a pleasing visual backdrop that suggests solidity and permanence. "We've got your back" complements the inscribed stones themselves. In winter, the memorial will still be attractive and visited. It will not look abandoned. This morning, I noted, perhaps in connection with this meeting, someone had stuck pink cut Oriental lilies around the existing memorial in Guthrie Park. If people wish to leave remembrances like cut flowers, balloons, stuffed animals, and other items, this is not appropriate for Guthrie, but could be better incorporated in a memorial in front of Township Hall. There are enormous possibilities for plant material at this site. It is sunnier, so sun-loving plants can be included. Evergreens are possibilities, and since the memorial is not on parkland, the necessity for naturalistic plants is lessened. This site offers better respect for the fallen veterans by relocating the memorial away from public functions involving alcohol, trash, and other elements often linked with festivities. It has improved sensitivity to Olmstedian design, which recommends memorials adjacent to buildings. There are better opportunities for a respectful design without the inherent issues of inappropriate scale and location in Guthrie Park. It also has improved access to electricity and plumbing for potential water features or appropriate lighting. I'm almost done. Hang in there with me. Some people have objected that there is insufficient space to gather for large ceremonies. If we block off Burling Road instead of Blooming Bank, you can have a crowd that extends into Guthrie Park and includes ample space for ADA requirements using the existing sidewalks and parking lot between the library and Township Hall. Additionally, in inclement weather, rather than relocating the ceremonies to village churches, as is currently done, you can use the auditorium in Township Hall. Our landscape architecture consultant suggested a compromise, where the flagpole and attached plaque remain in Guthrie Park while the commemorative stones are moved to the Township Hall location. Ceremonies can continue around the Guthrie Park flagpole if desired, but day-to-day remembrances would be held in the new location. This is something that the LAC could support. Respectfully, I ask the veterans in this audience, and those who prefer the Guthrie Park location, should we not select a site that brings the most visibility to the fallen soldiers and allows the most access, especially to those who are disabled or elderly? If you do a web search on, quote, "relocate Veterans' Memorial," you will find many municipalities that did just this specifically because of a desire to elevate the visibility of the memorial. To the trustees, I am not asking you to choose between respect for veterans versus respect for the disabled. You can accomplish both by relocating the memorial. I am not asking you to choose between Olmsted or veterans. You can have both by relocating this memorial. I am not asking you to choose between the future and the past. You can have both by relocating this memorial. The young men who died, whose names are listed on this memorial, were 25, 24, 23 years They were young men. They looked towards the future. I think we owe them the right and the privilege of having their names close where everyone can see them, in a place where there's sunshine and light. Thank you for your time.
So, let's go to the next step of this process then.
Other than this?
Yeah, I want to read about preservation first. The LAC's recommendation was transmitted to the Preservation Commission for review and comment, and Chairperson Maloney presented the LAC's recommendation to the Preservation Commission during this October 12, 2017, regular meeting. The Preservation Commission expressed appreciation that a professional was engaged to create some options, and still felt that a professional designer should be used to create any final plan. The Preservation Commissioners agreed that the Veterans' Memorial is a simple memorial that does not need much renovation. Loveling and stabilization of the monuments, some simple landscaping, and an ADA accessible path would seem to be sufficient. Preservation Commission members noted that while the Veterans' Memorial current configuration is somewhat haphazard, that may add to the memorial's charm. The Commission also observed that the current location suggests a more solemn or sacred space, a sort of private room within an open space, which seems appropriate for a more somber memorial. Ultimately, the Preservation Commission recommended that the Veterans' Memorial not be relocated, but be renovated in its current location. The individual monuments should be stabilized, especially the large WWII monument, and an ADA-compliant walkway to the memorial should be provided. So that was the take of the Preservation Commission. So would anyone like to address the board regarding this? Mr. Sisalak?
Tom, excuse me, Tom Sisalak, 217 Herrick Road. My focus, along with the American Legion Post #488, and many, many Riverside residents, is to keep the Gold Star Memorial right where it is, and has been at Guthrie Park Flagpole for almost 100 years, since the end of World War I. This is, in my opinion, the most sacred site in all of Riverside. It is quiet, peaceful, right there in Guthrie Park to honor and pay our highest respects to the Riverside 54, the young soldiers from Riverside who were killed in action defending our freedom in World War I, World War II, Korea, and Vietnam. This is, in my opinion, Riverside's Arlington Cemetery. This historic site was specifically selected by Riverside's World War I Memorial Committee in 1919 to be the permanent site to honor Riverside soldiers and veterans who were killed in action. Someone needs to speak up for the Riverside 54, because they never came home. They fought and died for our village and for our freedom. It is now up to us to maintain that freedom and respect their sacrifices. I began this renovation project idea almost 11 years ago, after I took my father, who was a WWII Army veteran, to the Memorial Day Program, and afterwards noticed that the large granite stone had been sinking into the ground, and the "Killed in Action" plaque was actually under the ground. Twelve "Killed in Action" names were actually buried under the dirt. So I've actually been digging a trench in front of their names for the past 10 and a half years. I'm sure several other people do the same thing. The World War I stones, there are four, they were placed there by the Riverside Grammar School at the advice of that committee in 1919. They're worn, tarnished, in disrepair after almost 100 years. The USA flagpole has rusted. It needs a lot of repair, scraping the rust, being repainted. The flowers and shrubs were actually overgrowing the memorial stones. The Gold Star Memorial repairs are greatly needed. The following specific items include a concrete footing poured underneath the huge granite stone, which is about 4,000 pounds, I estimate, so it will never sink any longer. Clean and repair the four World War I stones. Clean and repair the Blue Star plaque. Remove the rust and repair the flagpole. If necessary, add a stone path or a concrete walkway from the north by the train station towards the flagpole. There is actually a small village, just like Riverside in Italy, called Nutuno. Every year, the students at a nearby university walk among the white marble gravestones of 7,860 Killed in Action American soldiers from World War II. Each student selects one American soldier who is actually buried in their town. They do research about that young American soldier, write a story to express their deepest appreciation for America saving their village and their country. appreciation for America saving their village and their country. We need to do the same thing, show Riverside's deepest respect for the Riverside 54 who helped save our village of Riverside and our nation. Finally, and also sadly, during the past 10 and a half years, many Riverside veterans were also helping me on this project to actually see and enjoy the renovated Gold Star Memorial. However, several of these veterans have already passed away, to name just a few: Scuffy Gross, United States Army, Dr. Marion Magalotti, United States Army, Frank Sisalak, United States Army, Mrs. Jimmy Michaels. There are many elder veterans who are living in Riverside. Some are here tonight. Let's not wait any longer. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to address the board before the trustees? Yes, sir, please.
Mr. President, Madam Manager, Madam Clerk, trustees, citizens of Riverside, fellow veterans. I'm not a resident of Riverside, but I've been to that memorial a few times. And for us as veterans, I think we've been misquoted. I don't think anyone would compare that memorial to Arlington. We would, however, compare it to the Iwo Jima Memorial. We would, however, compare it to the Washington Monument. Once a monument is set up in most communities, for us as veterans, that is holy ground. Whether it be a local historical monument, a national monument, the Arizona Memorial, it is holy ground to us because these are our brothers and sisters. And though almost 100 years ago, the children of this community decided that those stones need to be there, and it's imperative upon us to ensure that in the future, the work that those children did to raise the funds and to get that done is carried forth for posterity. It is also important for us as citizens and veterans to ensure that if we do not remember the mistakes of history, we are doomed to repeat them. Those names of the 54 are mistakes that countries made, beginning 100 years ago and continuing all the way through 1975 with the Vietnam War. But if we do not remember and continue the objectivity of leaving them where they are, pardon the expression, like war graves, then we set a precedence that anything that someone deems needs to be futurized or updated, we then move it. I'm sorry, but I can completely not disagree with that. And as far as the LAC saying that this area here in front of your village hall is sufficient, let's imagine a day in which Memorial Day, Veterans Day, December 7th, that in fact there are a couple of hundred people standing here. You're going to block the entire street? You're going to make it dangerous for the fire department or the police department to respond to an emergency because people are blocking the street? And you're going to take the integrity of what the sacrifice of those 54 men and move it here just to open up green space? As far as ADA accessibility, I don't think there's a veteran in this country who, seeing a veteran walk over there or any attendee who has needed help, handicapped, wheelchairs, canes, as I carry, or a walker that would not physically walk over and pick that man up and walk him over there. You don't need a sidewalk in a public park that had none before. Now, the thought that we would have a curb cut on each side of the park and a car could be moved up and a veteran or wheelchair unloaded, and the veterans that are assembled there would then help to move that wheelchair over to the memorial because that person wanted to see it, I don't think there's a veteran in this room that would say no. So I implore you, do not move this memorial. As a community, simply renovate it back to what it was in 1919 with nice new plaques and remove some of the planting if that's needed or update it, cut back some of the canopy, upgrade the lighting in the flagpole, give it a new paint job, but leave its integrity You would not do that to any other memorial. And I am Anthony Ward. I am the coordinator of the Combined Veterans of Berwyn. I'm a United States Navy veteran with four tours in Vietnam. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else like to address? Yes, sir, please.
Thank you. Ron Newman, 216 East Quincy, Riverside. This has been very interesting. I fully agree with the last two speakers. This would be a real shame if that memorial was ever moved. I call Coach Tom. He's done an awful lot of work on this. I served in the 60s. I was never in combat, but in 1949, my dad said he wanted to go sledding. He had a toboggan. In 1949, we lived in La Grange. He said, "Let's go to Riverside." Riverside, where's Riverside? I haven't heard of Riverside. Oh, I like La Grange. Okay, I'll go. So we come down to Riverside, and the first thing my dad did, I want to see that memorial. I walked through that memorial, read some names. That was, I always remember that. 1949. I've lived in Riverside for about 30 years, and once in a while, I'd go over and look at that memorial. It does need updating. That's a given. But I think it's, if you put it in front of the town hall, that's commercializing it. Commercializing it. Why do, if people are interested, they can walk across the street. That's a serenity area. You can see the river real nice there, and I disagree with the lady saying it should be in front of town hall. And I worked at the VA 15 years, and once in a while, somebody would put a picture up there of a memorial. I see the veterans walking, looking at that, and if it wasn't in front of town hall, to me, it wouldn't really look like a true memorial for soldiers. And I bet every veteran in the room agrees that should stay where it is. I know there's some veterans back there. I don't know if they're wounded, if they served, but I think the veterans should have a choice where it is to thank you for considering it.
Anyone else, please?
Hi, my name is Dan Creek. I live at 8643 Rockefeller, but still at Riverside Township. My comments are somewhat general, and I just wanted to share my general thoughts. Great memorials like the Iwo Jima Memorial, the Tomb of the Unknowns, the Vietnam Memorial, are all open-air, natural locations. This is important to link our shared journey through life and death, as evidenced and reflected in nature. Nature is very important. I love what Olmsted has done in this town. I love the fact that we have such beautiful parks and such a wonderful location in Riverside, and that embracing of nature is something that's very important to veterans. We live, we toil, we sweat, we die in nature. We need to have a memorial in a natural setting, not in a setting up against a building, not in a setting that is adjacent to a public building. We need a natural setting. What our memorial means to veterans, what our memorial means when we think about the fallen, is it means all gave some and some gave all. It means that we continue to provide a service to our brothers and sisters and our nation. When we look at the memorial, it's important to recognize our fallen, to honor the fallen, to highlight their sacrifice, and to make us all think about and remember the cost of conflict. Moving the memorial to a much more generic location minimizes all of those aspects. It reduces the impact that it has on us when we see a memorial. It reduces the impact when a child sees the memorial in the park and says, "Well, what is this about?" Well, it's because people died. It's because there was a conflict. It's because people couldn't resolve their conflict in a better way. Do better, young man. Do better, young lady. Lead our nation into a better direction. This is what the memorial means. Thank you.
I would just ask that the 54 guys' names that are out there went in expecting nothing. They weren't going in there for glory or a big monument in a park somewhere where 50,000 people could see it. They were just going to do their duty. They didn't come back. There's plenty of other guys here that did come back that want to honor those people. And I think we have a better idea of the sacrifices that they went through in order to accomplish what they did and what everyone else, every other veteran in this room, has done. So I would ask that logic and good judgment, also not to mention the interest of cost here, which, where's the money going to come from? It should stay where it's at. Thanks very much.
My name is Lou Heine. I was a combat veteran in Korea with the Marines, as was Diane's husband, late husband. And I just want to say, I was at the preservation meeting who voted unanimously that we leave it where it is. And all of the, there were a lot of veterans there, and they felt the same way. And as Tom said, we had, what, 500 people at St. Mary's? You're just not going to get 500 people out there on that front yard when we have the service. So I would just like to say, let's please leave it where it is. It's a beautiful place.
I'm a resident of Riverside. I'm also with Historical Commission. My name is Diane Saragoli. My husband was a Marine, and he served in the Korean War, '50 to '53. He used to go to the memorial even though he didn't know anyone buried there or, you know, remembered there. I wish we would keep it where it is. There'll be a lot of traffic, noise from the police and the fire department, and it just, why move it? Let's keep it where it is. Thank you.
So before we open it up to discussion by the trustees, I am quite confident that I speak for everyone up here that we are honored by the presence of the veterans in this room this evening. And I think I also speak for everyone up here that it's all of our wish to make the Veterans Memorial the place that it deserves to be and to bring it back to its original intent. So the discussion is how best to do that. So now I will turn this discussion over to the trustees. Trustee Pollak.
Tried to look at this, obviously, this is a very emotional issue, but it's also a practical issue and a decision that we're making for long-term interests of the community and the history of the community. I assume there's a lot of, or I think there's a lot of different purposes for a memorial, any memorial, but I would think that perhaps the two main purposes is to honor those who are memorialized, in this case, the veterans that gave their lives for our country. But equally, I think, it would seem to me that it's to educate the present and the future. People who are currently living and are children of the future, educate them about the sacrifices that people have made for them, for their benefit, and what it takes, what the price of freedom is in a democracy. I think this, to me, this decision kind of brings those two issues into conflict. And the reason I say that is that obviously, the veterans that are here, and they're the ones we would ask in terms of what best would honor their brothers and sisters, the veterans that are here feel strongly that it should remain as it is. I think the conflict in my mind is that to educate the present and the future, the village-town hall location is a better location, simply because more people will use it. Outside the building I work in, they built the memorial, Veterans Memorial, seven or eight years ago. Every day, just about every single day, I see someone standing at that memorial with their head bowed, and it's usually someone who's coming in to the village hall to pay a water bill or to do police business or village business, but they use it every day just about, and they remember the veterans every day because it's right there where they're doing their public business. They can't miss it. So I'm conflicted because of those two conflicting issues, you know, to honor the past but also to educate the present and the future. So I'm not quite sure what the right thing to do, but I think that's the way I'm looking at it.
So when you talk about educating the future, one of the things I remember growing up in Riverside was my dad taking me to the memorial and talking about the names on those stones and talking to me about war and educating me on what that meant. I, you know, I look at Riverside as not just my home, but my family's legacy because, you know, A.J. Cross and Ezra Sherman hired Olmsted, right? They were two of the eight founding families of Riverside. And I have to tell you, the thought of moving that memorial for me as a trustee and as a resident and as one of the founding members of the town, families, I would, I mean, I'm passionately against it. I think that the veterans that stood up today and spoke, those are the people that we're honoring as well as the 54 that are deceased. And I think that, you know, this is a very delicate situation that if that's what they want, then that's what we should give them. And there's nothing to say that we couldn't put something else outside the town hall, but I don't think that we should even consider moving the memorial that's there today. And again, from my perspective, I was educated there. I've spent a lot of time there. I agree that someone sitting on a chair with two bare hands is not right. I think we should respect the memorial by surrounding it and protecting it during the parties in the park. But I just, you know, I will ask the other trustees to please leave it where it is.
Other comments?
I personally don't think this is our decision. I think it's their decision, and they've made it, so I, that...
Mr. Peters, did you?
Yeah, I'm, I've been in this town a lot, less than your family has been. It took me five years to realize there was even a memorial there. And I would venture to say there's a lot of people who don't know that memorial is there, whether they've been educated, you know, by stumbling across it or someone has told them about it. So I'm kind of in Trustee Pollak's camp where I, every year, we get further and further away, and I don't, from these con- away, and I don't, from these conflicts that we're, that we're memorializing, and so I'm concerned that ten, twenty, thirty years from now, there won't be the impetus that is even there today to, to memorialize this, to, to honor the people who are there, if people don't know that the memorial exists. And that's my concern is, and so I don't, I don't, I don't know how I would vote, and I understand that, you know, you are passionately one way, but I have a feeling that there's a lot of people out in our, our village who don't recognize the value of that memorial, um, and don't understand what it stands for. And I think that we're doing a disservice to our future by not providing that education for them as, as much as possible.
Well, Liz, I don't think you heard what the veterans are asking for. They're asking for it to get, to get a facelift where it's at right now. And, and I guess, I, I find it hard to believe that, walking through Guthrie Park, you can't see the memorial there. I, I just, going to a picnic in, in Guthrie Park, you can't see the memorial there. Should we improve it? Absolutely. Should we pick those stones up? Should we, so you don't have to dig holes anymore? Yeah, absolutely. But to move it is, is not going to educate future people. If people can't find the memorial, they live in Riverside, they probably shouldn't live in Riverside. I, I just, you know, it's, it's just not something that we should play with.
All right, I think it's pretty obvious where I'm at. I am a veteran, and, uh, that's why I wanted to let everybody else speak first. It would be a huge disservice for us to move that. It would be a huge disservice for us not to renovate it and provide the honor that those fifty-four deserve, and that legacy needs to continue. My son, Aiden, and I go over there quite a bit, and we not only remember the folks that are there, but we remember my brothers that I lost. And that's a very sacred place to me. There's nobody buried there, but their souls are there when they're with me. And that needs to stay there, and I will fight tongue-in-cheek on this board to keep it here. And we need to renovate it, and then we need to figure out a good way to get people to it. That's all I got to say.
So there's, there, there is a consensus, I think, to, to maintain it in its, in its present state. I'll just add, just as a quick note, with regard to the, the education aspect, I, I'm reminded of a, a quote by Faulkner, who said, "The past isn't dead, it isn't even past." And the responsibility for education belongs to us. So if we have a situation in our village where people are not aware of that memorial, that's our job. And that's our job, and to make sure that that, that that is remedied in the future. And I think that a proper renovation of the memorial in its Sylvan setting would be appropriate. And, uh, so I think that, seems like that's the route that we want to take. The, the procedural question, uh, would be how to go about this. I, you know, I, I take the, the Preservation Commission, you know, specifically said that they thought any final plan should be professionally done as well. We are all sensitive to the cost aspect of this. Perhaps the most cost-effective way would be to allow the LAC to continue with Living Habitat, since they've already, already had a look at this site, uh, to see exactly what, what we want to be done from a design standpoint, because they really, you know, they kind of outlined estimated cost. So that, that seems to me, Ms. Maloney, what do you, do you think that would be appropriate for your commission to, to revisit this with guidance from this, from us? Or at this point, do you think it would be more effective just to allow staff to work directly with Living Habitat?
What is the...
Could you, I'm sorry to ask, could you go up? I'm sorry. If you don't mind, I apologize.
Just to remind the board, and of course, we'll, we'll, uh, follow, uh, your directives, but, um, what is your advice as it pertains to making the current site ADA accessible?
I, I'll, I'll respond to that. The, the first issue, I think, is, um, because there's still, is some, we're still unclear exactly what triggers the ADA compliance and to what extent it has to be, you know, how much renovation we require. Uh, so that would be the first thing we have to find out. If, if all were, I shouldn't say all, if what we're doing is re-establishing the footings of the, of the stones and doing some general landscaping, perhaps doing something with the, you know, the space itself, I don't know to what extent that would require ADA compliance. Uh, I would think at the, at the most extreme, it would be a path similar to what you had, had mentioned earlier, at a curb cut. But we would have to, we'd have to do that research and find out exactly what, what the law would require, depending on what we did. Trustee Pollak?
My personal feeling is it should be ADA compliant, whether the law requires it or not.
Oh, yeah, right. But what that means is...
Okay.
So...
I'm not quite sure what that means.
What we have understood, and, you know, with or without looking at the law, but if we wanted to make it in the spirit of the law, that would involve including seeding potentially and expanding the footprint. Is that what the board wants to do?
I see this as a phase. I see this, the better way to approach this is to phase it. And, and I totally respect your opinion on the ADA, but there are preserved locations that are historic that do not meet the ADA requirements, and that's been there for over a hundred years. I see this as a phased opportunity to, one, re-establish it in the honor, raise them up, get them on a footing, get them on a foundation, then work with the landscape to get the landscape to be respectful as it is. That's just renovation, that's maintenance. That doesn't trigger any ADA requirements. It's, it's a maintenance to take care of this, and then we look at it from that perspective. Get them established, and then look to get them, we, we can raise them and keep them right there, and still not, and we can look for the funds to polish them up and clean them up and repair them. But we got to get them up and stabilized, first and foremost, so that those that use them can continue to use them, right, as they are. And then if we want to look at the next step of, of finding some, some landscape money to better landscape with more proper plants that then help to be respectful and keep its kind of room within the park, and then that's the next step. And then after that, if we look to that, and it starts to get more use, and we get the education going, and people know it's there, and we see a requirement to make it more accessible, then we look at a respectful way to do that within the Olmsted's toolkit. That would be my recommendation.
Let me ask you a historical question, and this is either for you, Ms. Maloney, or if anybody in the room happens to know this. Uh, one thing, and I, I hadn't really noticed this until Ms. Maloney brought it to my attention, is the size of that flagpole. I mean, that, that is a really tall, big flagpole. My, my hunch is, it's that height because of the surrounding tree canopy, uh, and, you know, in an effort to get the flag above that. But one of the things that Ms. Maloney, the LAC, pointed out is how, I mean, that flagpole is kind of out of scale of, with regard to the, to the site. Does anybody have a, have any, any historical knowledge as, as to why that particular size flagpole was chosen? Ms. Saragoli?
I believe it's probably because you can see it from a distance, and it would draw your attention to the memorial.
Because one, the reason this is significant, because one of the things that has bothered me probably for the ten and a half years that, that Tom's been working on too, is we can't get light up there. So the, the existing light does not light the flag, which is unacceptable. So we either have to do something with that light, so that it actually can reach the, the flag itself, or we have to do something with the pole. So that, that seems, that, I think that is a, a necessary aspect of, of this renovation.
Yeah, I think you, the light, I have a light full specification, it's all over the place, we put them on everyone, I've heard it said this. That's an easy next, that's, that's a light bulb, spec issue. Because you can get them, you clamp them on up higher, and then they light up.
Maybe that's all that's necessary.
Or you put the ones down on the ground, and then beam out, like, most people prefer the ones that are up on the pole itself, and just let the light, you're not shining the whole pole, or you're just lighting the flag.
I'm sorry to ask this question and open up again, but we're talking about putting a concrete footing or a concrete base on the, underneath these to establish them? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, certainly the one.
Something like that.
The, the large one.
Okay.
The larger one that we've all been digging, digging the names out.
Right.
Because that, that's imperative.
Okay.
Whether, whether the other ones, I mean, we could, we'd have to ask the experts to what degree we'd have to reset the other ones.
It's a very simple process from a mining company.
Yeah. Uh, well, I, the only reason why, because I, I was confused. I thought I had heard a veteran say they did not want that. And so that's why I'm trying to figure out, it sounded like we were all on the same page, but I, I'm just trying to...
Absolutely. If I can, is the line right, please?
Yeah, I think it was you who said that. I'm sorry, sir.
A stone can be moved without breaking it up. There are concrete pumping companies that will come in, dig holes at the base of that stone, and pump concrete into it to bring it back up to its grave that it was in nineteen nineteen. The cost would also be much less than the thought of renting a twenty-ton crane, bringing it into the park, tearing up the entire park to bring this crane in, lift the stone, build the foundation, bring another crane back in to put the stone back in position once the concrete clears, and no one would even know it was done. Because once the grass grew back over the spot where they dug a hole and pumped concrete to lift it, as they do with many sidewalks, no one would even know you did it. So six months from now, or the next spring, no one would know you did it, except that they would say, "Boy, the stone is raised." And the cost would be minuscule compared to renting cranes, building footings, renting cranes again to lift it up, set it back in place. Much simpler design, much simpler alternative than putting a footing underneath a memorial that didn't have one to begin with. I think the imperative part is to restore it to what it was in nineteen nineteen. And as far as education, let's work with the schools to see that children that are studying history, when they're studying American history of the time of the Great War, bring them over and educate them as to why Guthrie Park has this. It would be an ideal, uh, forgive me if I don't come off the word, an ideal footing for them to understand why this park and that memorial is important.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, so we would be happy, uh, to work with this. I think we should continue to work with, um, Living Habitats. They understand what we're doing, what we want to do. What I would ask is, from the trustees or from some appointed group of people, the bare minimum requirements. And I say bare minimum requirements because following trustees, sorry?
Lumson.
Lumson's, uh, advice to take it kind of step by step, if we do bare minimum, then potentially, we can avoid the legal trigger of ADA. That doesn't get us out of the ethical situation, but we'll look at the legal ramification of that. So if someone can provide, because I've, uh, anoint someone to provide us the bare minimum requirements, then we can act on that. Otherwise, we're trying to address too many people's wishes.
We can, we can provide that, we can provide that to you from state.
Great, okay.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I think we should do is, is that, once we get these things, we need to look at the landscaping, uh, around there. It's, I mean, I think part of the problem with being here for ten years and not knowing it's there is you don't see it. Um, I mean, it's, we need to work on, on the landscaping around there. Some of those bushes, they've been there for, for forever, they're, 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 they're overgrown and whatever.
Can I jump in there for a second? And, um, I want to do our best in that regard. Uh, I am familiar with the respected landscape designer who worked on that before, uh, ten or so years ago. The intent is to try to make it a naturalistic landscape, which would, which would blend in well with Guthrie Park. So I'm hoping people are not thinking about brightly colored flowers that would draw attention to it, or anything like that. Because the Landscape Advisory Commission operates under Olmstedian principles. So we can improve the plants, but if you have in your mind, I'll say petunias, that's not going to happen. So is, is that what you're...
No, I'm, I'm, what I have in mind is, is plantings around it that allow you to see the memorial. Um, it's, it's, it's overgrown, um, and I, I, I don't, maybe it's low growth, maybe whatever needs to be done, but plantings around it, that doesn't have to be colorful, um, but I think it needs to be, needs to be visible.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And maintainable. I mean, I think that's the other thing, is product that needs to be maintainable, if everything grows, so.
Yeah.
So what we will do is we'll work with staff, and I can also poll trustees as well, we'll get to some very specific guidance for the LAC. And, and let me just say, while you're standing here, on behalf of the board, we know how seriously the LAC took this, and how much time and consideration and respect that you gave to it, so we greatly appreciate that.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on this point? Um, just before we leave it, I just want to say, uh, Mr. Creek, I wrote down and I will never forget, "All gave some, and some gave all." Thank you for that. Does anyone have any new business this evening? Hearing none, we do have need for an executive session to discuss the sale of village property, and also to discuss collective negotiating matters, and to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee or legal counsel. So with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn to the executive session, not to reconvene. Motion by Mr. Lumson.
Second.
Second by Dr. Gisa. Please call the board.
Trustee Hall.
Hi.
Trustee Gisa.
Hi.
Trustee Lumson.
Hi.
Trustee Valerie.
Hi.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, and good evening.